Okay, we're gonna call the Castle Hills Regular City Councilman in order and determine if a quorum is present. A quorum is present. We're gonna start with invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. We have Mr. Hector Vialada here from Cavalry New Spring Church to lead us in the invocation.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here once again. Love to pray for you. I'd love to share two scriptures with you if you'd allow me. The first one is Proverbs 16:9 that tells us that "A man's heart plans his way," but it says, "The Lord directs his steps." And then right before that, in Proverbs 16, verse 3, it says, "Commit your works to the Lord, "and your thoughts will be established." And that's exactly what I'd like to pray for this meeting today. That God would direct steps, that God would establish thoughts, as you are faithful to plan ways and commit them to Him. Men, if you'll bow your heads in prayer with me. Lord, we thank you for this meeting. Lord, we thank you for our mayor and the councilmen and women. Lord, we pray that you would lead, Lord, the meeting as you see fit, that as men plans their way, Lord, that you would direct steps. Lord, that you would establish the things that are necessary for this city. Lord, you know what you have in store for it and what it needs. Lord, what it is up ahead. And so we just pray that you would lead, that you would guide, and that you would direct steps. And I ask this in Jesus's name. Amen. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. Chief Zuniga, will you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the code for which it stands, one nation, and without doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, first up on acknowledgements and presentations, we have Castle Hills Police Department, Mr. Rapley.
Mayor and Council, sorry, I'm running late. I went to meet the teacher, so it was like a speed dating, meet the teacher. So it was seven teachers in 10 minutes. So plus there's a big accident on 410, so just luck. So what I wanted to do, it's on the agenda, is I wanted to recognize our outgoing chief, Steve Zuniga. I know he doesn't want us to say anything, or he doesn't like the limelight, but I think it's important. We recognize his work as chief. Starting from 15 years ago, all the way to ending as chief. So it's well deserved. He's outgoing. He's going to go work in another law enforcement state agency. When he first approached me about it, I told me I was gonna be interviewed by somebody from TABC, and my first words were, "I'm gonna tell him I had to wake you up one day in the office, so that'll get you to stay here." So I wish he wasn't going. And I appreciate everybody from the police department being here as supportive of Chief Zuniga at this time. Chief is leaving in about 12 days, I think. So we'll be working on interim, and then tomorrow, we are actually posting the permanent position and hope to fill the position by the first of the year. So, Chief, real quick, we have a plaque and a watch for you. I have no idea where those are. I think the mayor has them.
Yes, I do. Chief, just want to thank you for your years of service in the city of Castle Hills, starting as a patrolman, deputy sergeant, captain, and now chief, especially through some of the most difficult times in our history. And so thank you to you for your service and your family, because I know it's a family contribution. Chief Zuniga's wife, Luthie, is here with us. So thank you so much for being here with us as well. We have a small gift here for you.
Come on down, Mayor. Come on up, Chief. This was supposed to be a surprise, but I wanted to make sure it happened. That's specifically why I put Castle Hills Police Department, because, you know, it covers Mr. Schnall's points of being on the agenda. Right, Chief.
Thank you. Some brief words. Excuse me. Council members, mayor, CM, staff, and citizens. I started my law enforcement career in 1991 with the South Padrala Police Department. And I worked at several other agencies as well before ending up here in Castle Hills. It has been a true pleasure being a part of this city and providing a service to you all, to the city and the citizens of Castle Hills. Over the last 14 years here at CHPD, I've seen many positive things happen, such as seeing new faces, new employees, upgrading equipment, and trying to stay competitive and innovative. I have also seen some sad things, such as a Wedgewood fire, where we lost five residents and displaced all the others. Two officers getting seriously injured in a DWI accident that resulted in them jumping over the wall here at the overpass at Honeysuckle. And then, of course, the most recent, the loss of Officer Ron Singleton, very close friend of mine. Through thick and thin, the members of this team have stuck together and pulled through, even though we were short seven officers. One of the things that I'm proud of is playing an instrumental part in getting the retirement change from one and a half to one to two to one, getting our new fleet, and then getting our upcoming dispatch center remodeling that is coming in soon. But all of this was not done by myself, but it was done with the help of my team, all the guys that I work with. After 30 years, the time has come to retire and close this chapter in my book and move on to the next. Those that truly know me, that I'm not one that likes to take it easy and will certainly not become inactive and stay at home. I have accepted a position with the Texas Alcohol and Beverage Commission, or TABC, and I start October 1st. I want to thank you all for the opportunity that you have given me to be a part of this great city and to serve as your chief of police, which is, which was a position I never imagined I would ever hold in my law enforcement career. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you to all the officers that were here with us today. I appreciate it. Let you get back to continuing to provide unrivaled policing here in Castle Hills. Okay, we're moving on to citizen comments. I don't think we have anybody sign up to speak, and so we'll proceed straight into this consent agenda. Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the consent agenda with amendments.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a second? Second, my Ms. Haley, do we have any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, council. Okay, next item up for new business is public hearing on an application from Harold Reeves for a special use permit at 2120 Northwest Military Highway, Castle Hills, Texas, 72 and 3, more particularly described, indeed, recorded under Bear County Clerk's Document Number 2023-0007101 in the official public record of Bear County, Texas, for the continued use of the property to perform massage services under a new owner. It is 6:40 Tuesday, September 2nd, or September 10th, and we will open the public hearing. If there is nobody signed up to speak, then we'll close the public hearing at 6:40 and proceed on item 6.2. Discussion of Possible Action Ordinance Number 2024-09-10 on an application from Harold Reeves for an SUP at 2120 Northwest Military Highway, Castle Hills, Texas, 72 and 3, more particularly described, indeed, recorded under Bear County Clerk's Document Number 2023-0007101 in the official public record of Bear County, Texas, for the continued use of the property to perform massage services under a new owner. Mr. Rapley?
Thank you, Mayor Council. This item in front of you was reviewed, discussed, and acted upon for a recommendation for your consideration last Tuesday night at the zoning meeting, which they voted four to one approval on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Council, we have any comments, questions, motions? Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt Ordinance Number 2024-09-10, as stated.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a second? Second, Mr. Joyce?
Mr. Rapley? The applicant is here in case you had any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Thank you for being here. Council? Any comments, questions? On favor? Unanimous. Thank you, council. Thank you so much for being here with us. Next up, we have public hearing on an application from Massage Endeavors USA LLC for a special use permit for an SUP at 2241 Northwest Military Highway, Castle Hills, Texas, 72 and 3, more particularly described, indeed, recorded in Book 10296, pages 2240 through to 2246 of the official record of real property of Bear County, Texas, for the continued use of properties to perform massage services under a new owner. It is 6:42 Tuesdays, September 10th. We're going to open the public hearing. If there is nobody signed up to speak, we will close the public hearing at 6:42. Next up, we have item 6.4, Discussion of Possible Action Ordinance Number 2024-09-10-A on an application from Massage Endeavors USA LLC for an SUP at 2241 Northwest Military Highway, Castle Hills, Texas, 72 and 3, more particularly described, indeed, recorded in Book 10296, pages 2242 through 2246 of the official public record of the real property of Bear County, Texas, for the continued use of the properties to perform massage services under a new owner. Mr. Rapley?
Mayor and Council, again, this item was in front of the zoning commission last Tuesday night. It was reviewed, discussed, and then an action was taken to recommend approval three to two by the zoning commission.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Council?
Mr. Mayor? I move that we adopt Ordinance Number... I'm sure I got it right. 2024-09-10-A.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Joyce? Ms. Haley?
What was the discussion summarized in the zoning commission that made it a 3-2 vote?
I'm not too sure. I know there was questions about... The chairman had questions in particular about the current amount of massage businesses we have, any prior criminal or civil, like code-related. I'm not sure why the three to two, because it changed from four to one, since it is the same exact change of an SUP. But those are the kind of questions that were on both of the applicants. The applicant is here in case you have any questions to him as well.
Any further questions? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, council. Thank you all for being here with us. Okay, next up, we have Discussion of Possible Action by Record Vote on Ordinance Number 2024-09-10-B to adopt fiscal year 2025 operating budget for the city of Castle Hills. Mr. Rapley?
Thank you, Mayor Council. It's about that time after a couple of months of work to move forward and work to adopt this budget for fiscal year 2025. I just wanted to say, staff is pleased to submit the budget for fiscal year 2025 for adoption. The proposed budget will begin October 1st, 2024. Budget is balanced, required by law, highlights key points important to you and citizens of Castle Hills, and reflects our commitment to provide excellent service, municipal service to the citizens and businesses while maintaining stringent fiscal control. City manager, I'm responsible to provide you with a budget document which details expected expenses for the next fiscal year, which include anticipated revenue to meet those expenses. Some of the key principles I have would have been put into this is basic service maintained at a current level adequately. Reserves maintained at adequate levels, which protects the city from future uncertainties. Revenue will be established, or was established, at reasonable levels, utilizing historical data. Department and program costs will be budgeted at reasonable levels, which parallel cost of providing services. And then employee benefits and salaries, all of them are now funded within the 25 budget. The proposed budget is fiscally conservative and balanced. As I mentioned, the general fund is the largest fund, which consists of police, permitting, planning, administration, public works. All city employee salaries, again, are funded out of this general fund. The proposed general fund for consideration tonight, revenue totals $8,367,219, and the expenses in the proposed budget total $8,367,219. So highlights in the budget itself, as I mentioned, $8,367,219, beginning October 1st and ending September 30th. We achieved our two-year goal of doing a nine-month budget to get on an October fiscal calendar, and I appreciate it. It's been one of my goals since I walked in the door, just seems like a few years ago. But now we're parallel to, like any other municipality, that has an October 1st fiscal calendar. So I appreciate y'all moving forward with us as staff to have a nine-month, and now a 12-month, like I say, any normal city from that standpoint. It doesn't include any personal, additional personnel. 3.5 cost of living, based on our last meeting, was programmed in. 5% increase of the current cost, the healthcare, as I mentioned, we were able to... I wasn't... Ms. Davis was able to get it down from 10 to 5%. So I commend her on that. We increased the firefighter from 51,098 to 54,243 for the entry-level firefighter position, what was in line with most our nearby cities from that standpoint, to be recruit... To be able to recruit applicants. 50 cent increase is built in to cover landfill charges. They're gonna go up as of October 1st, the $2 per ton. And then include is the proposed tax rate of 540661, M and O 482512, and then an INS, which decreased from last year of this .058149. And it is below the voter approval rate. I'm sorry. Just as I showed you last time, this is the five-year historical on the tax rate. And the proposed is at the bottom, the 54661, which again is a decrease from our current tax rate of 2023, 543658. As I mentioned, the revenues, $8,238,296, and property taxes. Sales of property taxes make up $5,883,775 total revenue. Adware and collection is based on the current property tax rate, and the city is the second-largest revenue is sales tax. Bear County Appraisal District sets the valuation, and City Council sets the tax rate, as you have done. The proposed tax rate, again, is the .540661 per 100 valuation. I showed you this slide last time. There's a kind of a modification as far as what the cost now for the plans for the pavilions. Then we talked about some other projects out of the seed. I put conversion implementation costs related to a new financial system right now, and I'll go into detail with that. And then, of course, 200,000 seed, and then out of ARPA, and then 236,000 left in seed to utilize. The budget highlights under capital, we set aside 10,000 for future rescue truck, 25,000 again for future fire vehicle, 50,000 for future public works vehicle, 15,000 set aside for future fire SB, SCBA breathing apparatus. Okay. Next slide here. So last time I had unfunded projects, and so what, if you recall, we had, we were on the positive side of about 202,000. So you had asked me to program in 3.5%. So that total was about 180,000, which left us just about 24,000 on the positive side. As a result, I have plugged that 24,000 in the line item under capital outlay, under, it's under the line item, I don't have with me, the last page, for 24,000 plugged in. And so what I've done is sort of programmed in and broken up expenses based on some of the funded requests. If you look at the... Sorry, excuse me, council. So if you look at capital purchases, the last page line item, under capital outlay expenditures, that's where we plugged capital purchases, that's where we plugged in the remaining 24,000 for future projects, which I'll kind of get into detail here in a minute. Moving forward, the pavilions, and we'll get to that on a future agenda item, on cost for that, and what encompasses the entire cost for all that. Program in 100,000 from ARPA. The diesel storage tank, chief was able to revisit that for 5,000, put that under ARPA, remodel restrooms, 40,000 out of ARPA, replace the three bay doors out of ARPA for 24,000, under public works, 25,000 for the generator. And then administrative finance, the in-code we talked about last meeting. So all of y'all have a quote, and my goal is not to get into details with this. I was promised you to come back and tell you all the details to a certain degree about cost right now. My goal is to take this up at a future council meeting, because if we move forward with it, we'll have a contract and a dollar amount that we'll have to pay upfront. And so if you look at the cost there, I've highlighted there on the front page, it shows 22,195. So this is like the purchase of the software and the upfront payment from that standpoint. So that's where I'm reserving and earmarking that 24,000 under capital expenses. If you turn to the next page, page two, it shows 52,160. That is a one-time cost for the conversion, implementation, training. It's a nine-month process. So over that period of time, we'll be paying them out of the 275 hours, professional services, data conversion, and project management, that totals the 52,160. So my goal is to take that one time over that nine months out of the seed for that piece. Now re-incurring on the last page, there was a number 19,981 built in. That's the re-incurring cost if we were to move forward with this financial system moving forward. Now, right now, we have assist, and we pay about 6,000 in annual costs, so that net change is about 13,000. So I want to bring this back to, because there's a piece right now, we would be moving to the platform of in-code 10. We would be moving to the platform of encode ten, financial platform. Right now permits and courts are on nine, and so there's sort of a migration cost that we still don't have that. That would be a final piece to let y'all know what needs to be plugged in as well. So the first step would be bringing in agenda item, contract, and then approving a certain amount being the nineteen thousand, or excuse me, the twenty two thousand, one ninety five. And then the second piece would be approving, so that the money, if you approve it, the money would be in the seed for the one time cost for the conversion implementation for the software. Nora, did I cover everything? Okay. So I promised her that I would cover every piece of this invoice, I mean this quote. So I I'm not asking for approval tonight. I want to come back and talk about this thoroughly with you all. I just want to let you know the money's been programmed in. And if we decide not to go that route, then the money can be used towards something else. So any questions on that one particularly? Okay. And then the only two we have unfunded right now, because that would have been out of the general fund, was under the fire and then the apparatus for the MDT computers, fourteen thousand, which we may be able to take out of the workstation upgrade possibly for that. I'll get with chief on that as well. I'm not saying it's out of the question, but there is a fund we can utilize it out of. Any questions? Okay. Again, I'm just showing you the streets because all of this has been programmed into the street maintenance fund about which streets will be doing the micro surfacing next year, and then which three streets will be doing the the mill and overlay. The engineers have chosen Amerson Lane, Castle Oaks Drive from Roundup to West Avenue, and then Lemonwood from Rolletto to Northwest Military as the first. And this is going to have to be phased over four years, probably based on the cost to mill and overlay certain streets. So this is the first phase of a few to do and program into the budget. There we go. Uh, next step, adopt the budget. As I always show you, what you get for your dollar, that's sort of the breakdown. So for forty one cents, you get a police department. So well worth it. Fire department, twenty seven cents, administration comes cheap, sanitation, sanitation streets, and then municipal court, and then our capital. So that's pretty rich broken up. If anybody asks you what your dollar, where your dollar goes for municipal government services. I just want to wrap it up. As I mentioned before, every budget is attempt to balance current and future needs with the framework of limited resources. This budget has been constructed within those guidelines. The budget sustains operations, includes operational expense changes from our current year twenty four to the proposed twenty five incorporates our debt model, includes capital needs towards the continuation to improve the city's infrastructure. I wish to extend, extend my appreciation to you, council, for attending these meetings, budget work sessions today, reviewing the budget documents, your, your, your continual guidance and leadership as we work to develop a final adoption. I also want to express my appreciation to the entire city staff. Our leadership team from the city apartment heads for everyone's dedication and hard work is striving to maintain the highest level of service to the citizens and businesses in our community. Specifically, want to thank Ms. Nora Davis and Ms. Vicky Wallace for all their work and expertise in putting together this document in front of you for adoption tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Counsel, comments, Mr. Joyce?
Thank you, Mayor. Kudos to you all for figuring this out. We left you with a large charge last week and you figured it out. Thank you for that. We don't have in code yet, but it's programmed, it's figured out. It is a complicated animal, so I agree that it's best just to give a little bit more thought, look at a little more detail. And, you know, when, when that happens. So thank you all. It's really, it's been terrific watching this develop. So with that, I move to adopt ordinance number twenty twenty four dash oh nine dash ten dash B approving fiscal year twenty twenty five operating budget for the city of Castle Hills.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Joyce. And second, Mr. May, comments, questions? Okay, and this will be a roll call vote and the city secretary will lead us to that.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Haley?
Aye.
Councilmember May?
Aye.
Councilmember Joyce?
Aye.
Councilmember Danes?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you, council. Mr. Rappley?
I just wanted to respond to Mr. Joyce and as far as the encode, I, I wouldn't even allow y'all to make a decision because the contract hasn't on the desk of Mr. Schmal yet, so. But thank you.
Okay, next up, we have discussion and possible action on ordinance number twenty twenty four dash oh nine dash ten dash C to adopt the twenty twenty four tax rate for the city of Castle Hills by a record vote, Mr. Rappley.
I thank you, Mayor Council, this is for moving forward with adopting the the tax rate that's been incorporated into the budget. Again, as we talked about it, our current tax proposed is point, five, four, zero, six, six, one. And then specifically, if you need the breakdown, as we've talked about it before, the the M and O rate, I thought I had that, sorry. The M and O rate. I have my notes, what are the exact M and O rate is, sorry.
Point four, eight, two, five, one, two.
Yeah, sorry, it's right here. Thank you. The point, four, eight, two, five, one, two, and then the INS interest in seeking point, zero, five, one, four, nine.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Counsel, Mr. Smith, you look pensive.
I was going for thoughtful. I just have a question about the motion itself. It says that, you know, here the tax rate is lower by about oh, point, zero, zero, two. But the motion actually says it's a one point, three, three percent increase, is that?
That's because the M and O portion went up.
The M and O portion went up, but the INS went down.
Went down.
Okay, but the overall tax rate went down.
Still lower than, it's still a total decrease, but the M and O has increased. So you're taking a little bit more, and that's why it's that one point, three, three percent.
And I think if I may, Mr. Rappley, that the valuations have gone up, even though we've decreased the tax rate percent.
Yeah, we're, it's bringing in additional revenue. Yeah.
Okay.
That part I understood, it was just that it's I, I, like I say, I went to law school because I was told there'd be no math, so it didn't make any sense to me, but thank you for clearing that up.
And as, as Ms. Wallace explained to Nora and I about this, and there was a thing about not using our tax increments and staying below what was last year's, doesn't hurt us, but the M and O did increase. And again, as the mayor said, because of valuations.
Okay, counsel, do we have a motion?
So again, this is by record road and the language needs to read accordingly.
I think everybody has a copy of that in front of them. Ms. Haley?
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of zero point, five, four, zero, six, six, one, which is effectively a one point, three, three percent increase in the tax rate and adopt ordinance number twenty twenty four, oh, nine, ten, C. The tax rate is as follows. Maintenance and operations, zero point, four, eight, two, five, one, two. Interest in sinking, zero point, zero, five, eight, one, four, nine. For a total tax rate of zero point, five, four, zero, six, six, one.
We have a motion, Ms. Haley. Second by Ms. Danes.
Record vote.
And any further comments, questions? Okay, our city secretary will lead us to a record vote.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Haley?
Aye.
Councilmember May?
Aye.
Councilmember Joyce?
Aye.
Councilmember Danes?
Aye.
Thank you, counsel, motion passes unanimously. Okay, next up, we have discussion and possible action and a motion to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the fiscal year of twenty twenty five by a record, twenty twenty five budget by a record vote, Mr. Rappley.
Mayor Council, this item is obviously to ratify the tax increase reflected in the budget you just adopted. So the language there for six point seven is the motion that needs to be made.
Ms. Danes?
I move to approve ratifying the fiscal year twenty twenty five budget that will raise more revenue from property taxes than last year's budget by an amount of one million, two hundred ninety two thousand, three hundred fifty two dollars, which is forty two point, six, five percent increase from last year's budget. The property tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the tax roll this year is twenty two thousand, two hundred and seventy six dollars.
Thank you, Ms. Danes, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Haley. Mr. Rappley?
And just so, and speaking to Ms. Wallace, again, that reflects going from a nine month to a twelve month budget.
Thank you. Any comments? Questions? Okay, and we will proceed with a record vote by our city secretary once more.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Haley?
Aye.
Councilmember May?
Aye.
Councilmember Joyce?
Aye.
Councilmember Danes?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, counsel. Uh, next up, we have discussion and possible action on a city purchase of pavilions for the commons through the buy board, Mr. Rappley.
Thank you, Mayor Council. I'm actually going to just go back to this. So in your agenda packet, you have a rendering of the commons plan with the pavilions and then the rendering of what the pavilions look like. Earlier today, well, I'll start by saying, when we put this plan together, originally they were estimating that the pavilions were going to be about forty five thousand dollar each, uh, flat work. And then we had to purchase the stones and then we'll get a general contractor to do the install and do all the flat work. But they got a revised quote as of today, and we were going through the buy board, which actually is cheaper. So that's what I figured, less towards the ARPA money for expenses related to the pavilions. Because essentially, the, it was dropped to fifty seven thousand, zero, seventy six, which two pavilions at sixty one thousand, seven eighty four. Since we don't pay taxes, that actually comes out to the, what would be the forty eight thousand, uh, seven eighty four mark. I mean, excuse me, fifty eight thousand, seven eighty four mark. And these, this has been a process that has been reviewed by the Parks and Projects for a series of meetings, months. And then the Parks and Project Subcommittee reviewed the color and details relating to the style of the pavilion itself, the colors. So there's been great deal of thought and work put into this. So what we would end up doing is actually purchasing these, they would deliver, and then we would after that have to get a general contractor, which they have some general contractors who build these locally and would just pay that separately to have them built. And of course, the concrete flat work as well.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley, Mr. Joyce.
Thank you, Mayor. I think, Mr. Rappley, just for clarification, what you're asking for tonight is just a portion of that hundred twenty thousand. And what that fifty seven thousand and change represents, if I'm not mistaken, is the structural steel plus, say, metal roof.
Yes.
Everything else will be done by a general contractor at a later date, as you stated.
Exactly, because as, as Mr. Joyce and I met with them to revisit this real quick before, because it was slightly higher, and so what they had mentioned that the delivery time is about twelve, thirteen weeks by the time they get it here. So we have some time to start putting together the flat work, find a general contractor and have it ready for them to install and build.
Mr. Rappley? So the cost is fifty eight thousand dollars, but that doesn't include the flat work or the installation, right?
No, that doesn't. So right now, we're just buying, as, as Councilman Joyce said, just the pavilions, the roof and steel portion of it for fifty seven thousand, zero, seventy six through the buy board.
And how big are the pavilions?
Twenty five by twenty five.
Right. Okay. Perfect, thank you.
Again, that's why I plugged in a hundred thousand, because if we're paying for the actual pavilions, fifty seven thousand, that leaves us some dollars for contractor and flat work.
And so the stone is included?
That, that stone is, we have to buy that separately. So the flat work and stones will be built as the pavilion is built as well, correct?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Rappley, and I think the hope is that during this twelve or thirteen week delivery period that we can, over that period, the engineers can finalize their drawings, which they're nearly done. Because, you know, it's, it's, it's become a pretty sophisticated little animal. Um, because there's, there's some earthwork that has to be done, very minor. But in order to set up the elevations of the shading structures properly and the sidewalk properly, there's a little bit of grading that has to be done, so it doesn't get flooded when it rains. And of course, the, the foundations is concrete, the sidewalks are concrete. And then the stone itself, so those pieces would be part of a, plus our sculpture pedestals, let us not forget them. That would be part of a general contractor package that Mr. Rappley would take bids on.
Yeah, and it's, so this is just, also the topographical as well was done as part of this, so.
Yeah. Right.
Or the geo work was done, I'm sorry, you said topo.
But anyway, the hope is that while we're waiting for the steel, all of that other stuff can get under control and have a GC on board by the time the steel arrives and begin work.
Sounds good.
So ultimately, if we can get all this done, we'll be ready for early spring to have shade.
Perfect. We have a motion? Mr. Joyce?
I move that we approve the expenditure of fifty seven thousand dollars for the structural steel and roof and authorize Mr. Rappley to sign that contract and for the buy board.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce, do we have a second? Second by Mr. May. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you, counsel. Thank you, Mr. Joyce, for your work in Parks and Projects. Uh, next up, we have announcements there and council members and items of community interests, Mr. Smith.
Uh, first of all, first of all, I'd like to thank Chief Zuniga for his service of the community. Within months of my wife and I moving here, we found out just how fast the police respond. And it was to an email. They were there within three minutes at five AM in the morning. So thank you for your service, thank you for what you've done for citizens and for the police department. And second, I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. Rappley, Ms. Davis and Ms. Wallace for their work on the budget. It's a long slog for them to get through this, but they do a great job every year and they do a great job of explaining it. And I just, it, it's the most important work the city does every year is to make sure we're funded for the next year. And they do a great job of it, and it makes it easy on us to be able to get things, to get things passed. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, Ms. Haley.
And I was thinking about those Saturdays that the Parks and Projects Commission has come and discussed and looked and thought and taken their work so seriously to end up where we are doing this today, which led to all the other boards and commissions that our citizens participate in and bring their talent and their intelligence and their energy and give the extra to this community, which is what makes this community the place that we love here. And I thank all of them and I echo, thank you to Chief Zuniga and for all of our police and just for all you bring every day. We don't say thank you enough, and I'm glad to have that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haley, Mr. May.
Uh, just another reminder, this Sunday, five, four to five in the afternoon, there'll be the free scanning of photos. So anyone that's listening out there, we really need these photos to complete our publication for the seventy fifth. Anyone that is interested in the regular meeting, it starts at two, two PM.
Thank you, Mr. May, Mr. Joyce.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder, speaking of Parks and Projects, thank you for your kind words, Councilwoman Haley. This Saturday at ten o'clock right here, uh, to begin more discussions of improvements for the city. And I'll echo the comments, chief, thank you so much for a tremendous job. Wish you the best in the next chapter. I hope it's very successful for you. And ladies, thank you for your great work. Appreciate that very much. Gentlemen, thank you all, appreciate it very much. Mr. Rappley, too. Great job, you guys, thank you.
Ms. Danes?
Chief Zuniga, thank you, thank you for being here, thank you for serving our community so well. Congratulations on your retirement from at least this portion of your career and good luck on the next steps to come. And we're very happy for you, although we are sad to see you go. And again, thank you to the administrative administration for putting this budget together. I agree with Councilman Smith, you do, we ask a lot of questions and we task you with a lot of extra things in this. I agree with Councilwoman Smith, you do, we ask a lot of questions and we task you with a lot of extra things in this two month process, but it does make it really easy for us to understand and then finally get to an approval process, and we're grateful for that.
Thank you, Ms. Danes. Uh, I wanted to extend a quick thank you to Mr. Barrera, who is uh, here subbing in for Mr. Schmal. Thank you for being here with us. And I also wanted to comment about, there was an article in my essay about Castle Hills and policing. And many of y'all saw that. I immediately uh, wrote the editor and the reporter and advised them that San Antonio has issues with policing because of the area that they serve or their staffing levels, but that Castle Hills does not have those issues and that we strive ourselves, pride ourselves and striving to maintain the two to three minute police response and fire. And that, just wanted to make sure that that was clearly uh, identified and they were, they were very receptive and made the changes accordingly, so making sure the Castle Hills is portrayed in the best possible light everywhere. Uh, but on the subject of the police department, uh, want to thank Chief Zuniga for his years of service to the city of Castle Hills. As I mentioned in the beginning, uh, those were some difficult years with everything that transpired and he's uh, taken it all and led with grace. Uh, I think the Castle Hills Police Department's in probably the best position it's been in uh, in years, and so thank you for your leadership and making sure that's possible, and I'm excited for TABC because I'm sure you're going to do great things over there with them as well. Thank you, chief. Mr. Rappley?
Uh, just let you know, y'all are invited. We're going to have a, a lunch for Chief Zuniga next Wednesday. So next Wednesday, Nora? Next Wednesday, sorry. Um, so you all are invited, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Okay, council, I'll enter. Yes, ma'am.
Remember that on September twenty eighth, there'll be the Here Rose Day in the Commons from ten to two, which is the police department's safety first, all the things that they're going to do, and then October first, Tuesday night is National Night Out, six thirty to eight thirty.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
We have a motion on Mr. May. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Smith, all in favor? All right, it's seven sixteen, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you for everybody for being here with us this evening.